And welcome to the September 20th meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Seeing none, at this time I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. Counselor Kuchar, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
My delectious flag of the United States of America, which we will republish for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Cregan.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here, Remo Motley.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Shilts.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Here.
President Zarela.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you very much. Public forum, the public had been advised to contact the city clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None have been brought to our attention. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and address, and identify the item on the agenda on which you wish to speak, and then you may speak on that item for no more than two minutes.
Jaclyn Wenchy, Pittsburgh resident, I'm speaking on Agenda Item 222-22. Pittsburgh residents are not only poor, but we borne an increasing burden as you move to a single tax rate. Just because a person has a car doesn't mean they can afford this fee. Some people live in their cars, just ask our homeless outreach teams. Others you see at the gas station in the winter filling five-gallon containers with diesel fuel because they can't afford the minimum delivery from a home heating oil company. Have some compassion. Have you thought of the unintended consequences of this policy? How many, when faced with a fee they can't afford, will say, "Bleep that," and stop registering their cars but still drive them? The heavier the vehicle, the more damage it does to the roads. Instead of gaining the notoriety Ferguson, Missouri did by funding its government through fees on poor people, why don't you impose fees on the companies whose vehicles have the most impact on our roads? Waste management has streams of trucks going to our landfill every day, and their revenue for the year ending March 30th, 2022, was $18.48 billion, up 18.45% from the year before. Amazon, made out like a bandit in the pandemic as our governor and others forced small businesses to close, their 2021 revenue was $469.8 billion, and they'll be bringing lots of vehicles to our streets. Unitil made $98.9 million in annual revenue as of June 2022. Go where the money is, focus on them, not us. And if you'd like to sponsor a petition that people in Pittsburgh will actually like, see me after the meeting.
Good evening, Janet Yost, Tubergham Park. I was here on Wednesday to speak to the smaller group, and I am here again to oppose 222-22, the suggestion of a $200 per vehicle registered in Pittsburgh yearly for a five-year period. I think that, I spoke last week, and just want to reiterate that I think we can't afford it. I understand that that counselors Boishman and Zarela did this with no malice of intent. They are trying to solve a difficult problem, and I recognize that. However, I wanted to be clear that I do not understand what on tonight's agenda it says next to 222-22, that it is leave to withdraw. I spent my professional life as a kindergarten teacher. I don't know anything about legalese, and I just was wanting to be sure that someone came yet again, as this woman has already done, to speak in opposition. And I would just like to add another piece of information, is that last week it felt to me like Counselor Boishman was frustrated that people had come in opposition of his suggestion. And that's unfair to those of us who take the time to show up. I realize that for the most part the gallery is empty. But when people are here, what was frustrating to me was that you just kept repeating it and saying it louder, as though you were gonna, you know, somehow wear me down. And being 100% Irish, that's not happening. But in fairness to you, I understand your passion. But in fairness to me and many of the residents of this wonderful city, we can't afford it. So I thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on any item? Seeing none, we will move to the report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had an extensive Appointments Committee meeting earlier this evening. Instead of going through each and every one, I would suggest we take it as a whole, as each and every appointment to the Pittsburgh Disability Commission, Commission of the Department of Public Works, Cultural Council, Conservation Commission, Chief Procurement Officer, Disability Commission, were all unanimously approved.
Move to accept the committee's report.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Squallia.
Yes. Regarding our Council Rule 2.5, which does say a resume outlining the nominee's qualifications for the recommended appointment shall be submitted to the city clerk by the mayor at the time the name is submitted to the council for confirmation. And it says, "This rule shall not be suspended unless with respect to promotions within the ranks of police and fire." So I'd just like to remind the president and the chair of the Appointments Committee that we should be getting, and the clerk, that we should be getting resumes for all appointments.
Counselor, which appointments do we not have resumes for?
The packet didn't have any resumes. In the packet.
I don't have the packet with me. I would have to check that, because I thought they were...
Yeah, we have the letters of recommendation from the mayor, but not the resumes.
Well, I am informed that the resumes are on file with the clerk's office, which is what the rule strictly requires. I believe that the intention is that we will get them, and I'm sure that if we didn't, it's an oversight. But as far as technical compliance with the rule goes, if they are on file with the clerk, the rule has been followed.
So, I mean, it would be better if the council received those.
Certainly. And as I said, I believe that to have been simply either an oversight or just a mistaken direction of the email or something happens to all of us.
Thank you.
Counselor Kuchar. I would like to note that Counselor was at, is a member of the Appointments Committee, was at the meeting, and voted unanimously for all of them.
So noted. That said, I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Appointments Committee. If there is no objection, then it is approved. Report of the Committee on Records, Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order.
Move to accept the Records Committee report.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the report of the Committee on Records, there being no objection. It is approved. Next, we have the report of the Council as a whole committee, which met on September 14th, and took up two loan orders and two other finance orders. One was a transfer of peg access fees from the city to, well, from one account in the city to another account in the city for the purpose of transferring to FATV, which is what has always happened. One was the, a supplemental budget order expending additional revenues that we received from the state. And then a loan order for Crocker Elementary in the amount of $76,650,000, the full cost of which will not be borne by the city, or at least that's the plan. And a second for $40 million for the renovation of the public library, which is also the total amount to be expended, not the total amount that the city will be on the hook for.
Move to approve the report for 224, 22, and 225, 22.
Second.
Second.
Mr. President.
On 224 or 225?
On 2, on 225. I just want to say one thing on 225. I'm not against it.
Go ahead.
I just want to let everybody know that the DPW, they told us that there was 25 people. Well, if you take five people out, they don't work on the highway, you got about 20 or 18 people, because right now you're standard 22. So there's five people, you get the dispatcher, and you get a couple of employees that work in the maintenance that don't have nothing to do. So basically, on your highway department, you have 18 people, or 19, and that's it. So I just wanted you to know, so if we come back and we say, "Well, they get 25 people." Well, five of them, or 22, five of them are doing other jobs, fixing the trucks that are needed repaired, or in others different jobs. Dispatch doesn't go on the road, they answer our phone calls.
Fair enough.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Just on that, the Commissioner of Public Works at the last budget hearing, what was asked point-blank, what does he need? He said, "I need a whole new crew, a working foreman and three people." He got a working foreman and two extra people, and then instead of a third person, he also got restoration of the park superintendent. So what the administration, and by extension this council, supported was probably close to 100% of what the commissioner asked for. And so regardless of if there are men or women working the trucks, repairs, that is what he said he needed, and that is what he, for the most part, got. And so he didn't say he needed 10 people, he didn't say he needed nine people or seven. He said he needed four. And he got four, one being the parks. Just want the public to hear that, that what he asked for, he, for the most part, got. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve the recommendation of the committee as to 224 and 225, 22. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, they are approved. The loan orders will require separate votes of two-thirds.
Move to accept the loan order 226, 22.
Second.
On the motion?
Go ahead.
I have something to say. I voted for the new school. I did, I believe in it. But I still maintain my fact that it's a lot of money that we're paying, and I have a hard time. I have a really hard time when we go with 226 and the other loan order, and we sit here and we tell people that we're always thinking about the poor and the people in the city of Pittsburgh and the taxpayer. We're taking out approximately $100 million loan here. Yes, you can look at it and say, "The state's paying 40%. They're paying $40,000." Well, we got $40,000 to pay for the school. You can say, "The state's giving us 12.5. We got $19 million to pay for the, for the library." So my question is to you, to the council, to the council, what is it? Are we thinking about the poor and the taxpayer? Or are we thinking about a new school and everything else? And that's my question. Because I don't like it when we use the poor and as an example. I just don't like it.
Counselor Cregan?
I'm just calling a point of order because this is not connected to what is actually before us, which is approving this. We're not discussing it, we have discussed it in the council as a whole, so I think philosophical, what, voyages are not really appropriate, and I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. As to, granted, the counselor has finished his time on the floor, so the point of order is not strictly needed, but I will note that I think it is in order to discuss the subject matter of a loan order when we're voting to approve it. I do, I would say, however, that such discussion should be limited to whether it is appropriate to approve or not, rather than the competing priorities that are not before us. That said, Counselor Dina Tally.
For the public's certification, not for the council, because I don't know who's watching this when they hear stuff like that. We're not borrowing $100 million. We're borrowing $33 million. 21 change for the school, 12 for the library. It was said crystal clearly at the committee meeting by the auditor, never said over $100 million. What he did say was both loans equal over $116 million, because that is what the bonding agencies require cities and towns to do, is borrow, is put a loan order forward for the full amount of the project in order to approve the project. Doesn't mean we're borrowing that amount. He said it three times in that meeting. So for the public, please understand, we're not borrowing $116 million. We're borrowing 33. Secondly, we have been talking about the library and Crocker Elementary School now for, since going back to 2012. We've had election upon election upon election. Everything we do as a council is not done through the prism of who is poor, because that's a subjective term, but the taxpayers and the general public at large who live in our communities. Schools affect people of all incomes, the library affects people of all incomes. So just so the public understands, we were provided as a council a debt schedule that I guarantee those who criticized these did not share with their constituents, because, for obvious reasons. The sheets that we were given showed quite clearly, chapter and verse, how this is affordable and how we're paying for it. And oh, by the way, it's still affordable after mass inflation not seen of a scale for 50 years. Everyone forgets that piece, too, that this project for the library was $10 million less five years ago. Crocker was literally...
Point of order? Can we, your point has been made, Counselor Dina Tally.
I haven't finished my point.
There's nothing out of order here at the moment?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know some of us continuously want to get out of here. The project for Crocker was $11,600,000, less than it was a year ago. We voted for the loan last year for $65 million. The cost went up $11 million because of that word called inflation that anybody here who's had a pulse the last two years would expect and understand.
Counselor.
So, you know, I'll just close with this. I think, considering my passion and my personality, I do my best to keep my cool every meeting when I have to hear this stuff, and I think I'm doing a good job with it. But the public has been well aware of this, there are no secrets, and we're not borrowing what he said we're borrowing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have a motion and second.
Mr. Chair, in response, in response to what he said, in response to him, and I know that I never said we're borrowing, I said, "We're taking a loan order of a total of 100-some odd thousand." Bear in mind, Mr. President, by the time we pay back Crocker Elementary School, and the counselor to my left said it, when he figured it out, that 5% interest will be $40 million, and the library will be $19 million.
Okay, Counselor, since we have...
But I'm going to vote for it, but I'm just letting you know.
Okay, so since we have a motion already before us, the appropriate discussion is of whether we should pass it or not. So, that said, if anyone has any further comment on whether or not we should vote in favor, all right, in that case, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cregan.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarela.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yep.
It passes 11 members.
Thank you very much. Second loan order, 227, 22.
Move to approve the report of the committee.
I will take that as a motion and second to put 227, 22 through its first reading. I'm sorry, the previous one also was, should have been a motion for first reading, I apologize for not stating that clearly. Anyone speaking on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cregan.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarela.
Yes.
And Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
It passes 11 unanimously.
Thank you very much. Our report of the Legislative Affairs Committee, which also met on September 14th, took up five items. I'm going to read them off briefly and then ask that we take 222, 22 separately, because I know it will occasion further comment. 28, 22, Counselor Sam Squallia, to increase available resident off-street parking during a snow emergency, that was held, for further information. City Auditor Calvin Brooks, to amend the city code at Chapter 3, Article 17, Insurance Commission, Section 3-160, to replace Superintendent of Public Buildings with Director of Facilities, that was approved. Counselors Dina Tally and Kuchar, to insert a city council rule, I'm not going to read it off because it was given leave to withdraw at the request of Counselor Kuchar. And an ordinance for the vacant property registration, that was held because there were some typos referenced that the department didn't have before them at that meeting. We will take that up as soon as they're prepared for it, at their leisure. I would ask that we have...
Move to accept the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee, 028, 22 through 190, 22.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and second to accept the report of the committee on the first four items. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. 222, 22, Counselors Paul Boishman and Anthony Zarela, to place on the November general election ballot a question substantially similar to that outlined in the enclosed petition relative to an annual road use fee and to research the steps necessary to implement such a policy if approved by the voters. The committee voted to give that leave to withdraw by a vote of 3 to 2. I do not wish to rehash anything discussed by the committee. In fact, I would, I will note that I think my colleagues who voted to give it leave to withdraw, as well as Counselor Van Hazinga who supported it, made some very good points, particularly about the need to do further legislative drafting and further public outreach before bringing this forward again. So though I voted in the opposition at the committee meeting, I do not oppose the acceptance of the committee's recommendation this evening. Counselor Boishman.
On the motion?
No motion.
I'm not going to go, oh, I'm not going to go and hash it out again, I'm not going to hash it out. But I want to say to the city councils, you all get the letter that I wrote approximately 15 years ago, 15 years ago. The only difference between 15 years ago and today, the holes are bigger and the roads are worse. That's the difference of today. And my, and my, and my, I still maintain this petition that was filed as a good petition and a fair petition. I tell you that honestly. I wouldn't do anything to hurt the people of Pittsburgh. You're spending $400,000 a year, you repair your roads every year, the same roads and the same holes. That's a waste of money, and you wouldn't do that if it was your house. You wouldn't do it. We're paying the wastewater treatment plant to pave our roads, to pave the roads, which is wrong, which is absolutely wrong. They shouldn't be paving our roads, and they pave it because they're all falling apart. When they dig a hole, they dig up. And my rates are high, and I pay a lot more than a lot of other people here. So I don't like it. I don't like it, and I feel bad for the people of Pittsburgh because it affects the poor. It affects them when they live in the houses, because they go up in the runs. All right, but that's it. So I gave my piece of thing. I will not support this. I think it's a good petition, I think it's an honest petition, and I think it's a very, very fair petition. Really do. Because this way here, everyone pays the same, unless you have more cars. If you go with an override or a death exclusion, you're going to pay more on that thing. And I will not support an override, and I will not support a death exclusion, because why should I pay more?
Counselor, when and if those come before us, we'll debate them then.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Squallia?
Thank you. I don't agree with this petition, and I will be voting against it, but I would just like to say that I really appreciate counselors Boishman and Zarela bringing some sort of solution to us for discussion. This helps us to, to spread it out to the voters, to, to gauge interest, and maybe to, you know, giving this leave to withdraw. We could even rework through this and maybe submit something even better and stronger in the future so that we can help Pittsburgh to take more responsibility and put more funding of our own monies into the road repair. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I share your hope, Counselor, that this will get people talking and get some ideas going. Counselor Van Hazinga?
Thank you, Mr. President. So three years ago, our DPW commissioner estimated that we need to spend $5 million each year to pave roads, just to keep up, just to stay even. And we're not doing that. Right now, we are spending the $1.1 million we get every year in Chapter 90 money and whatever spare change we can find in the sofa. And we're falling further and further behind, and the roads are getting worse and worse. And the longer we continue to disinvest from our roads, the bigger the problem's going to become. And there will be a bill that comes due, and the residents of Pittsburgh are going to have to pay it, and it's just going to keep getting higher and higher. So I encourage other members of the council and the public to work to find some way to create more money to spend on the roads, because the bill's going to get worse and worse. We have to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the recommendation of the committee for 222, 22.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the recommendation of the committee. All those in favor? Oh, is there, did you have something on the motion?
I just, I just wanted to make one comment on the motion.
Go ahead.
And that is, given the fact that the ballot question is a concept that, as Counselor Van Hazinga said at the committee meeting, and I agree with, is, is in and of itself a poll, I also agree with Counselor Cregan's comments at the meeting about these ballot questions typically are generated through, through the public organization. We see it at the state level, these ballot questions, they don't come from legislatures, they come from, 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 from the grassroots, the grassroots. And one of the things about this petition that I wasn't crazy about was, but I understand why it was doing this, is one thing I think may have been missed, not by all, but some, is the process of getting a ballot question before the voters for a local question, I believe, requires 10% of registered voters in the city to sign it, or, is it 10%?
That is the case when it does not originate from the city council.
Okay, so if it originates from the city council, it wouldn't need to get signatures?
No, there is a provision in our charter that states that the city council can submit any question to the voters for referential, at any time.
Okay, so, so that, well, my point still stands about, I'm not, I'm not a fan of bypassing the signature process, although I know it's legally allowed and it's, it's fine. I just feel like it would have more weight if it came from the voters themselves, like, like it does at the state level. And so that was one piece of this that I wasn't crazy about, but amongst many that I won't get into because, because it's already been said. But the last thing I'll say is, over the course of the month, I have fielded many comments from, from registered voters in the city through, through Facebook, phone, and email, and I kept a tally of each individual commenter and verified on the registration list that these people are Pittsburgh registered voters. And it's a small sample size, but 159 registered voters reached out to me individually in the last month, 159, and 91% of them said, "No way." And 78% of them said, "Don't even put this on the ballot." Again, 159 people, but they're all registered voters in the city. And I thought that was a pretty telling, small sample size of public sentiment, where I would argue that if this went through the signature process, it wouldn't get 2,500 signatures. signature process, it wouldn't get 2,500 signatures. And that's why I think it's more important that it comes from them and not so much from us. But, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. But I just wanted to make that point, that the feedback I gotten was 91% negative. And that's a, you don't see often people 90-plus percent against something. And so, I just took that with a lot of weight, and, and that just reinforces my position that there's, we're going to have to find another way, another concept that makes more sense. And the fact that there's so many questions about the concept, concerns about the concept, unknowns about the concept. I understand that voters will vote for a concept, and then the legislation gets drafted. Well, the problem I have is, most of us who are putting it on, if we were to put it on the ballot, don't have the details, which may be appropriate and, and not out of the norm. But there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of questions and a lot of concerns that we ourselves have about this. So, it'd be hard pressed for me to put it before voters if I can't explain to voters really what the outcome's going to be if they support it. And so, I don't expect them to vote intellectually on the subject that we ourselves aren't clear on yet either. So, that's why I'm supporting the leave to withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, like I said, that's entirely fair. I, before I go to Counselor Shultz, the survey data nerd in my blood does compel me to note that you may have a self-selection bias in your sample. However...
From two pages.
That's just, that's just a side note. I don't deny, you know, I received quite a bit of negative feedback as well, some positive. But, like I said, clearly more outreach is needed. Counselor Shultz?
I think one, one point that a lot of councilors have made about this proposal is that hopefully that, you know, just bringing this to the forefront, that maybe some creative idea will come out of it. And that's, that's what I'm hoping for, that, that I know Counselor Van Hazinga offered an amendment during the Legislative Affairs Committee. But, you know, as we maybe flush out some details and maybe even something else comes out of it that might be, might do the, do the job for us is, you know, that's why I voted to, to keep the discussion going. Thank you, Counselor. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Any, oh, Counselor Cragan?
Yeah, I mean, I really, I pretty much said from my piece, except for this piece, which is if we are, again, I will urge those who are passionate about pursuing this, Ms. Wetchy made a really good point about the number, the amount of heavy equipment that does travel in our streets. And a lot of it is from businesses that are from outside of Pittsburgh. And I think that that needs to be taken into account when it comes to road wear. So, I yield the floor.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? Two in opposition. Motion passes nine to two. Next, we have the report of the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. Public Safety met tonight and took up the following petition. 23822, Penya Motors LLC, to petition for a Class II dealer's license located at 447 Water Street. That was approved with conditions set forth by the zoning and including the repair or the replace the side barriers with better than what's there now. And the, Penya certainly understood what that meant and are willing to do everything that's been asked for, of them, to obtain that dealer's license. So, I appreciate them wanting to do business in Pittsburgh and hope, hope that we can help them along the way.
I would ask to entertain a motion to strike the added condition on the grounds that when the City Council acts as a licensing body, it is, it is perfectly legally allowable for us as a council to put any conditions on our licenses that are otherwise lawful. But it is my view that the proper body to consider site issues, site plan issues, and maintenance issues is the zoning board. Counselor Green?
I would just like to note that, yes, there were two specific recommendations from the zoning board that they are aware of about the condition of the lot, the overgrowth, and the condition of the fence. I had a nice conversation this afternoon with the owner of the property, Mr. Mateo, who assured me that the overgrowth situation was being taken care of and that he was not the property owner of the fence in question, but is working with the said property owner, and they're coming to an agreeance on that. The, the side barrier that was once there, it looks like at one point it was a guardrail, and there's been some fencing added to it. And it's more of a, it actually is a public safety issue, that if somebody comes down the side street and there's no barrier, that children or people that maybe would lose their stability would have the ability to fall off that wall and into their lot, and maybe even on the cars that are going to be parked there. So, it was, it was a condition that isn't going to hold them up any. It's just that zoning has a timeline of October 18th, when the two conditions that need to be met. This was another one, just to say that there does need to be some attention put on the side of that property, just to keep everybody safe without holding up their ability to do business on that property.
In light of a public safety concern, then I would withdraw my objection to that condition.
Move to accept the Public Safety Report.
I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. And good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Report of the Public Works Committee. Counselor Fleming, I believe you had said Counselor Shultz was chairing that? Is that the case?
I believe, oh, yeah.
Yes, I chaired it. Yes, we met on July 26, 2022, and we took up the following petitions. 19922, an ordinance, parking prohibited at all times relating to Boulder Drive, and the committee approved that by a vote of three to zero. The next petition, 20122, residents of Bella Vista Condominiums had a petition, some concerns. And we took 20122 and 20322 together because the petition, the, the petition actually was the same for both condominium complexes. So, we, we voted to approve Proposal Number One, which was about a crosswalk. But we are going to refer the other items to the Public Safety Committee and the POCS Board. Includes things like a police detail on weekends and a Townsend Street locked entrance. So, there's a lot, lot to look at there. So, those are, those items will be forwarded to those committees. 2022, 20222, Counselor Marissa Fleming, to fix cracked sidewalks due to overgrown tree roots in Stony Brook Village. That was approved by a three-zero vote. And I won't read the other three. They're, they're all being held. 08920, 02722, and 09322. They're all being held. One is, I think the 089 is a, waiting for a traffic study. And the other one, I think the DPW is looking at the 8 Boylston Street, Counselor Cruz's petition to assess the streetlight situation there. And then the last one, Counselor Squalia, looking at a four-way controlled stop intersection of Victoria Lane, Industrial Drive, and Game On Way. And that was held also pending a traffic study. So, that's the report.
Move to accept the recommendations of the Public Works Committee.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the report of the committee and recommendations. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it passes. Orders Finance. Order that they're being hereby is transferred from within the sum of $6,802, eight hundred, yeah, $6,802 from reserved for other municipal purposes, capital expenses, and credited to library expenses, building maintenance, for the purpose of supplementing repair costs for the HVAC system. 24022, order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, grant in the approximate amount of $150,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to address issues of vaccine equity. 24122, order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds for Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department Training Grant, in the approximate amount of $76,426.15 for the purpose of said grant, which is to train both Fire and Police Department dispatchers in medical and 911 emergency procedures. And 24222, order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the same grant, in the approximate amount of $174,594 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support salaries and provide repair and enhancement to the E911 service system in the Police Department. Those all stand referred to finance. 19922, Tom Skrowski, Executive Director of Community Development and Planning, and Amy LeBlanc, Senior Project Manager, to extend the 169-3 experimental regulations for an additional 30 days to expire Friday, October 21st, 2022. I have a request for suspension on this item.
Motion for suspension?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor De Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
And Counselor Boeschman.
Yes, yes.
11 unanimously.
All right. The matter is before the council. Tom, would you like to come on up?
Good evening, Counselors. So, this is in reference to, you may recall, our first meeting in June, prior to us converting to two-way Main Street, two-way Boulder Drive. We had to implement a 90-day experimental regulation, basically to ensure that when that shift takes place pursuant to Chapter 169-3 in the city code, that allows the council to set a 90-day experimental set of regulations. As we were kind of toeing with the changes from one-way to a two-way Main Street Boulder Drive, there is a series of changes related to parking, what direction cars are driving, and so forth. So, the council set that to expire this upcoming Thursday. At the following council meeting, June 21st, the formal set of ordinances was submitted to the council and then was referred to the Public Safety and the Public Works Committee. You all just approved the Public Works Committee's recommendations that, that set of ordinances be granted. It's now awaiting Public Safety. And I understand will be scheduled in advance of the October 4th meeting. So, this will buy us some additional time. After it goes to Public Safety, it'll then go to its first reading, October 4th, and then its second and final reading, the second meeting in October. So, we'll have new ordinances in place before this 30-day experimental period ends. But in the interim, we've got to make sure we're continuing to follow two-way rules and regulations for Sergeant Bucero, Chief Martino, and their team to conduct enforcement downtown.
Counselor Boeschman?
Mr. Chair, I get a question. I get a couple of questions on this, the proposal that he's submitted, and I wait to know. Because there's some of the things that I don't like about this proposal that they did. Can that be addressed here?
So, Counselor, first of all, yes. I mean, obviously, the council is always at liberty to change what we're voting on. But I will note that this is just an extension of the temporary regulations that we already approved as a body. The permanent ordinance, well, permanent until and unless amended or repealed, will be at the next council meeting.
I, I understand that. But the young man's leaving us sometime in October. So, he may not be in front of us, and we're going to have a complete stranger, if we do have a stranger. And my argument is this, is some of the, some of the design that we implemented is not working. It's not good. And I, and my question is to, to the Chair, I'd like to know who's designing some of these projects and why they're getting away with what they get away.
Okay. So, Counselor, I would say that unless, unless you intend to allow the temporary regulations to lapse in the interim, which would leave us with a set of laws that still mandates one-way travel on a two-way Main Street, then we need to pass this tonight and debate any of the potential changes going forward when we've all had, when we have more time to actually dig into the meat of it. Counselor Green?
So, just so that I can give everybody enough notice, and to be fair to the City Clerk's office, the public safety portion of this is scheduled for October 4th. And because there's potentially going to be some back-and-forth debate on this particular item, I've set aside 5:45 to start that meeting. But now, I'm wondering if, if it looks like it's going to get into who's doing what, and why are they allowed to do it, and by what means are they doing it. If I need to set aside more time for that Public Safety meeting, I would just as soon like to know now if there's going to be issues that are going to arise so I can, so we can inform everybody that that meeting may have to take place earlier in the afternoon.
Okay. So, I would say, Counselor, if you have concerns about this slate of ordinance changes, which is temporary for now and will potentially be made permanent in October, specifically the spots where you can and can't park, the parts that are one-way, and so on, if those are the specific issues that you have...
Yes.
Then I would encourage you to briefly list them, but not get into them, because we can debate them at a later time. But that way, Counselor Green will have advance notice. On the other hand, anything to do with the design and construction of the Main Street project itself is not before us.
But there seems to be a problem with the design of the project.
That, that may be the case, but that is not the item before us. Counselor Squalia?
Thank you. So, if I have suggested, recommended changes or other, otherwise something I might put in a petition form to adjust, would it be more, would it be quicker, more prudent to maybe write a letter and submit that to the Public Safety Committee for their suggestion for when they're discussing it in their meeting?
I would defer to the Chair, but that is the way I would probably do it.
For anything to do with Boulder Drive or Main Street traffic or parking, can I answer that?
Go right ahead.
I would, yes, I would prefer that so that we can be in contact with Mr. Skrowski and, of course, Mr. Erickson of the DPW, the ones doing the work. If there's something specific that needs to be addressed, and I can allot for time so that we're not backing up, you know, appointments and then the regular meetings. So, if we need to, if you can get that forwarded sooner than later, I would at least like their input on, you know, if this is going to need a half hour worth of debate, then I can adjust my meeting time. I just don't want to, I don't want it to have it to go on for another, you know, hour on design changes if we could address that in subcommittee.
So, maybe I just submit some suggestions to the Chair prior to the meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, if Counselor Boeschman would be willing to do that as well, that would be...
Well, I'm on the Safety Committee, so I can follow the Chair, but we better start early.
It would still be beneficial, though, of course, I can't require you to do so, if you were to submit a list to the Chair prior to the meeting, just for organizational purposes.
I'm not organized.
I don't want to have to be here at noon.
So, move to accept the order to 19922.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For it.
We have a few other petitions. If no one objects, I will waive reading them and sim, and they... If no one objects, I will waive reading them and simp, and they will simply stand referred to their respective committees.
So be.
So moved.
Thank you. If there is no objection, no objection, excellent. They stand referred to their appropriate committees. I will note that, as I typically do, I will note the dual referrals and other exceptions. 243 and 244 stand referred to Public Safety and Public Works. And 106 will be going to Legislative Affairs, but will also, but we will also hopefully be voting on a suspension of the rules at the next council meeting with the intention that we can thereby get it through its first reading without having to first receive the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee. In other words, we will receive the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee at that meeting and if the council is amenable, also vote its first reading at the same time for timing reasons. That's just a preview, though. That will be done formally later. That concludes our legislative agenda. I do have three announcements. The third meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, September 22nd, from 4 until 5:30 PM in Room 203 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. Ward 1 Counselor Bernie Schultz is hosting a Ward 1 community meeting on Monday, October 10th, 6:30, here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. Councilors Paul Boeschman and myself, Counselor Zarella, will make a presentation on a gamut of road paving funding issues, including the proposal that we just gave leave to withdraw, and will answer questions following the presentation. The British American Club is having a chicken barbecue with live music, September 25th. Time?
One o'clock.
One o'clock. Tickets are available at the club or at the door. And that concludes our agenda for the evening.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.